Call the meeting to order. Re-convened to open session. Anything to report out?
The council converted and closed session with the city's labor negotiators. As noted on the agenda, there is no reportable action.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Mawson.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huer.
Here.
Please join me in a silent prayer, followed by a flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Video statement. This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, July 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, July 21st at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
I'd like to pull J. 2, please.
Anything else? Okay. Presentations. Oath of office. Police Officer Jasper Wan. Aye.[132.31][132.31](Laughter).
No way. So, in case you're wondering why the room is so dark, three forces, our newest officer, Jasper Wan's family, and at the end of this, I expect you to be very simple one.[149.01][149.01](Laughter). So, recruitment, hiring, making sure that we're hiring the best and the brightest. Jasper comes to us with the so much praise for his character and his enthusiasm, and it all shined through in his interview process with us, his interview process. When I met with him one-on-one, and we're very, very proud that he is now part of our team. And so, a little bit about Jasper, he's 23 years old, and he was born in the Philippines, and he came to the United States when he was seven. Spent most of his life in Stockton, where he attended elementary school and middle school, and in high school, he's a graduate of Toque High School in Lodi. He went to San Joaquin Delta College with his AS in criminal justice. During college, he played men's rugby at the University of Pacific, where he won the national championship in 2015. He's a competitive power lifter and has broke a couple of state records. So, I'm very, very pleased to have you here. Now, you get to do your oath of office, and then after that, then you get to introduce everybody. So, welcome aboard. Don't lock your knees, you'll be all right.
I will state your name.
Aye, Jasper Wan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am an employee.
As I am an employee.
Of the city of Galt.
Of the city of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of.
Of the position of.
Police officer.
Police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank everyone, council members, the chief, everyone who could attend the ceremony. Just wanted to let you guys know that I truly appreciate it, and it is a privilege to actually put on this badge, put on this uniform, to actually serve my community. And it's been approximately a month since I started with Galt Police Department. With all the experiences I've had, I already met a lot of friends, a lot of mentors along the way, who absolutely welcomed me with open arms. I truly feel like I am part of a family, as opposed to like the bigger departments where you get kind of lost in the crowd. Here, I feel like the chief knows me personally. Same with the sergeant, same with the lieutenants, dispatchers, and other police officers. I feel like within the department, we're all one, and we are all doing basically the same job, a common purpose, and that's to serve the community. And that's the main reason why I want to become a police officer, is because I want to give back to the community. I know that I cannot make a difference just as a person, but I know every person that I meet, I can make a difference with every call that I go to, with every interaction. And I feel like that's what I can offer on the table, is that I know exactly inside, I know who I am, and I just want to thank my family for that, my parents for making me to the man I am, and I appreciate everyone, all my family and all my friends who came to support me. Thank you.[427.47][427.47](Applause).
Since he didn't name his whole family, can you all raise your hand? Oh, wow.
Wow.
Well, thank you for joining us.[444.69][444.69](Applause).
Right there with the polo, the black polo, his name's Arturo Wan. My mom right next to him, that's Nanette Wan. That's my sister right there, the young lady over there, her name's Jaylee, Jaylee Wan. That's my cousin over there, and his name is Jerome Clark. My cousin right there, Harvey, that's Jamal. That's Jarrett. I'm trying to have my glasses.[475.11][475.11](Laughter). That's Aaron. That's my friend Cory Vera. That's my friend Ryan Jones over there, my roommate, actually. And then that's Iris, and my girlfriend Inwander, twins, if you guys didn't know. And then that's Barry, and that's JJ over there. Who am I missing? Oh, my uncle Boyett, Chastity over there, Harris.
See, already testing you on your powers of observation.
Independence Day celebration. Certificate of Appreciation, California Waste Recovery Systems. Please join me at the podium. It's Rudy.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Rudy.
Thank you. Certificate of Appreciation. So, we hereby present California Waste Recovery Systems. The City Council of the City of Galt wishes to recognize California Waste Recovery Systems, Cal Waste, for their continued financial donation to the Galt Independence Day Celebration. Since 2011, Cal Waste has been a generous sponsor, supporting this community event, presented the 17th day of July, 2018. We have another.
Oh, there we go. Be here as long as you're doing the show, so, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Rudy. Did you have anything to add, Armando?
I just want to thank them for their continued support over the years. They've, they're a great friend of the Parks and Rec Department, and Dave is a very generous man, and I appreciate having him in this community, so.
Thank you. Great community sponsor.
We appreciate being here.
Make sure you hang that in your office, not Dave's.[613.04][613.04](Laughter).
Relax, he's going to put it up there.
I know.
He's got to get one bigger, that's his next one.
Thank you. Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address city council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk. If you don't have any, for under public comment.
Any public comment? Okay. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Mawson?
I'll try to keep it short. Since the last council meeting, I've been a little busy. Went to a mayor's and council members executive forum in Monterey, where things like Cal Per's pension developments were discussed. That's the elephant in the room. How to effectively work with city managers and city staff. How to grow city talent. Turns out, everybody's trying to, lack for a better term, poach everybody else's talent, whether city managers, city engineers, city employees. So, we had a discussion about that. And then I attended a one-day advanced leadership workshop on city finances, which primarily, again, concerned two-year budgets and Cal Per's and unfunded liability. Then I, we had a great time at our Independence Day event. And by the way, I believe there may have been four, maybe six people that finished after I did. Yeah, so, being a council member, I think most people did, that ran that race. I'd like to thank the Eagle Foundation for their military vehicles. That was quite impressive. I had a good time with that. And of course, fireworks show, and city staff, and volunteers, I mean, everybody did a great job, I think. So, I'd like to, I'd like to thank them all. I also attended a Sacramento Certified Champions Program, but I'll let Vice Mayor Cruz, who attended with me, he can report out on that, put him in the spotlight. And then, of course, the evening at the Ray House, which Paige was at. Was that under five minutes?
Oh, I'm really glad you guys attended the.
Yeah, Champions.
Champions program.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. We did attend, well, we'll back up a little bit, the July 4th event. Armando, I don't know how you do it, but every year you get better and better with it, and really appreciate it. You guys do a great job.
Yes, they do.
As was said, we attended the Greater Sacramento Champions Program, a lot of good information out of it, and, to be really honest, it's, Galt's ahead of the curve on a lot of the stuff we found out in there, but in some areas, we really need to find a way of rebranding ourselves so that we are set apart. I mean, obviously, Galt's an island in Sacramento County, we're separated from most of the other areas, but we need to find a way to brand ourselves so we can attract businesses and attract more people to come here. And that was one of the biggest things that came out of that, and a lot of the things that I asked for, their presentations they gave us, specifically asked for all three of them, because there were a lot of, a lot of good information, but they went really fast with it. So, if you weren't on top of it, taking copious notes, you were in trouble.
Yeah, don't blink. Yeah, don't blink.
That was great.
And they put, they put the troublemakers in on the far end, so.
Yes, they did.
Well, I'm glad to hear you went, because that makes, so that's three of us and the city manager, so now it's on you guys.
Having another one in October.
They're doing it again in August.
I think you have one, is it August?
October.
October.
October. Okay. So, Councilmember Campion, anything?
Just that it was a great parade, and I really enjoyed the weather this year.
Councilmember Lamson?
I really enjoyed the Ray House, Friday the 13th. It was a lovely evening, the inexpensive hot dogs for, what, $1.50, and the band, the gents, boy, that boy could sing. And apparently, he plays every Sunday at Mariscos, so if you guys want to go hear a good band. The 4th of July, and the, not really the 4th, but the.
Independence Day.
Independence Day celebration was, was great, and with the Kiwanis, we had some great sales at our fireworks booth after the 30th, so the last two days were incredible, so I think we did more than we did last year with that, and hopefully, all the other nonprofits did also. So, that could be a benefit of having them at different times. And that's about it. They're looking for a community character award, so if anyone out there knows anyone they would like to nominate for a community character award, please do that. The deadline is in August.
So, Armando, thank you to you and your staff, like I said, amazing job. Fireworks were fantastic, the parade, you guys, you guys are amazing. So, thank you for working with the community and our sponsors, and to have such a wonderful event for our community. The last three weeks of, since our last meeting, I've had my own, so I haven't, we, aside from the meeting that Jean and I attended with the county on Monday, I had the birth of a granddaughter three weeks ago, yesterday.
Mmm, congratulations.
I have a new granddaughter, Mallory, Mallory Brossard, and she resides here in Galt. So, we're really excited about that. Okay. Information consent calendar. We pull item J. 2.
Yes.
Go ahead.
There was an item on J. 2 that kind of concerned me, because it was a rather large number, and I was just asking for some clarification. The card services for $11,339, is that a one-time purchase, or is that a lump sum?
Are you talking about $30.78?
$30.78, yes. Under card services.
That would be a compilation of all cards, it wouldn't be one purchase. Citywide, we have around, I think, 30 cards, and various city individual, employees, staff are authorized to charge on it, so when you see card services, it's not one purchase, it would be accumulation of a number of things.
Okay. Is there any reason why we can't break that out? Because we are, we are dealing with public funds here, and it, there is some reportability here.
Oh, yeah, we can definitely do that. If that's the direction of the council, we can certainly, anytime we pay that, add a sheet to this, this agenda item with the detail.
Because we have $11,000 sitting there, and we don't know what it was spent on, I mean, broken down.
No, I could, we can do that for you. I can bring that to you the next meeting, as well as anytime we make that payment.
Is there any reason why we haven't been doing that? I mean, I saw it, and I believe it was.
We're breaking it out.
It was broken down.
In the June warrant report? Let me go back and look at that and see what was done there, because I don't recall seeing that.
I know when I first came on council, I asked for it to be broken down, because I was uncomfortable approving what I didn't know. City of Aniok actually does all their warrants by the budget code, so it would be like Public Works, Bank of America, then it would say Home Depot, things like that, but, so it's kind of all by department.
Well, there are, you know, there's, the report that we run is the report we chose to run, but we can run reports in other fashions, if you would like. If you want to see the jail account codes, we can certainly do that. It's just a matter of what information the council desires us to put in there.
It's just the level of transparency, so that people can see what's going on with it.
No, I don't dispute that at all. I think it's a very good idea.
So, do we have direction from staff that you want a further breakdown of the item?
Yes, please.
Yes. Okay. So, do I have a motion on the item? I make a motion to receive and file warrants for period ending June 27th. Do I have a second? Motion by Mayor Huer, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Nay.
Councilmember Mawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
I'm going to say no until I know what it is.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5, 3, 2 vote. Okay. Information consent calendar. Minutes of the regular meeting of June 19th. Galt Youth Commission Budget for fiscal year 2018-2019 to include an adult mentor retreat. Item 4, appropriate fiscal year, appropriate fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for city costs related to Galt Joint Union High School District 2 homecoming parades. Item 5, capital improvement program status update, April 1st to June 30th. Item 6, strategic plan update. Item 7, appropriation of Senate Bill SB 1, maintenance and rehabilitation funds and year-end fund transfer to the, to balance the gas tax maintenance fund. Item 8, treasures report for period ending May 2018. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mawson, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mawson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Scheduled matters.
Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Question. On that one item that, on the warrants, and I understand, you know, councils, council can vote any way they want, but my question is, is did you contact finance in advance of the meeting to ask this question in order to find out what the detail was?
I did not. I'd had, spent a lot of time going through some research as far as the different, since, since January, they've been broken out, all of a sudden, on this one particular one, they weren't. I thought it was one lump sum, and that's why I was asking the issue, but the biggest thing is, it had already been printed out and sent, so there's no way of sending it out there for the, for the public to know what was going on, so it's better to bring it out to the public meeting, so that they can hear and see what's going on.
I understand that, but my point is, it would have been prudent for you to contact staff in order to satisfy your mind, in your own mind, that it wasn't appropriate expenditure, and that you did have the evidence, so that you didn't have to vote no on all other warrants. That makes no sense.
Well, it may not make sense to you, but it makes me feel better when I.
It doesn't make sense to a person of normal sensibility.
Yeah. That is your opinion, sir.
Okay. Recommended, scheduled matters. Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, public hearing.
Madam Mayor and council members, this is an annual requirement of our landscape and lighting districts, is to prepare an engineer's report, set forth the proposed assessments that will be due in the following fiscal year, and open a public hearing prior to adoption of those rates, which are recommended at the conclusion of the hearing. For brevity, I've asked Mr. Bill Forrest, our staff engineer, to provide one presentation on all three districts at your pleasure, and then I would recommend that you open individual public hearings for each district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'll give the presentation a second to warm up. I see it on the little screen.
It's behind you. The other screen is having difficulty tonight.
Okay.
Taking the night off.
I'll do it over my shoulder.
Hey, look.
Yeah.
I'll do this.
You should catch up here pretty quick. Lights, the lights, it doesn't appear to be on. Yeah. Okay. Oh, now it's warming up.
Okay. Well, there's supposed to be a map there.
Oh.
Okay. Well, I'll start in the order as they're listed in the agenda. The Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, the boundaries roughly are Twin Cities to the north, Marengo Road to the east, Highway 99 to the west, and it ends about with what I refer to as the South Tributary of Dead Man's Gulch. This year, there was one annexation of additional properties. This was the Morale Estates Map, which was a map that was approved back in 2005, and was conditioned to annex into the Lighting and Landscape District. I'll reiterate this a couple of times. The Northeast area district, the assessments per parcel are fixed since the district's inception in the early 1990s. You can see up there what the typical assessment is for a single-family home. There's quite a range, depending on what benefit zone it resides in within the district. There are approximately about a little over 3,100 parcels within the district, both single-family residential and commercial properties in the Northeast area.
Could you, just for the benefit of our audience, explain the benefit zones, the difference? Two hundred and fifty bucks, one to the other.
The, the benefit zones are contained in the engineer's reports, and it basically, there's a list of, you know, various items per each benefit zone that the assessment pays for, parks, sound walls, street landscaping, lighting, both operation and maintenance, as well as operation and maintenance of all those other things, the parks, the landscaping, as mentioned. The West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District is mostly on the west side. There are a couple of parcels on the east side of the freeway, includes the industrial. This would be a good example, the benefit zone of the industrial parcels are only assessed for street lighting and operation and maintenance costs. Let me catch up to myself. There were no annexations or subdivisions within the West Side District. This is also a district that the assessment has not changed since the district inception in the early 1990s. And, again, there's a range of assessments for single-family residential parcels, again, in, depending on which benefit zone it lies, and the things that the assessment is to pay for. There are approximately a little over 1,000 parcels within the West Side District. Lighting and Landscaping District Number 3 is the newest district. This district has a CPI index attached to the assessment. This year, there were two annexations, the Trail Ridge Apartments. They came in with an expansion project, adding 14 units to the south, and we were, we conditioned the entire parcel since they're going to be merging the parcels into one, as well as a three-lot split referred to as the Van Horn Parcel Map. They were also conditioned to annex into District Number 3. As mentioned, the assessments per parcel can be adjusted based upon a Consumer Price Index. For this year, and we compared the index from January, January, so January of 2017 to January 2018, the index increased 3.12 percent roughly, and, and the, there's approximately 309 parcels in the District Number 3, and on this one, there's one assessment for single-family residential, which with the CPI, has increased to $328.60 per residential parcel, which represents a $9.94 increase from last year's assessment, annual assessment. I have more slides, I swear. To reinforce both the West Side and Northeast assessments. To reinforce, both the West Side and Northeast assessments have remained unchanged since the district's inception in the early 90s, which subjects both the districts to continued pressure, inflationary cost pressure, as the assessments haven't increased, but the expenditures Thusly, the, both the West Side and the Northeast area districts both require operating subsidies to maintain current service levels, and I've been doing this, presenting the engineer's reports for about 12 years, and every year's, we have budget savings and, and programs, and try to keep a cap on the expenditures. One bit of good news for District number three, in that the revenues exceed the expenditures for this, the fiscal year, and that's first time in a good number of years, as, as far as I can remember. Staff is developing recommendations regarding an optimal program, which may mean other financing mechanisms other than the LNL districts, which has some limitations per Prop 218, some recent court cases, and the Streets and the Highways Code. We'll be, I mean, back with council with workshops and, and working on that in the future. As an LNL district, they're subject to Prop 218, and any increase in assessments, particularly in the West Side and the Northeast, would require a balloting procedure that we would have to go to the constituents with a ballot to increase the assessments beyond what was currently established. Recommendation, that you conduct separate public hearings on each of the three LNL districts, starting as they are in the agenda with the Northeast, then the West Side, and then District number three, and following the public hearing, close the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the engineer's reports for each district separately, and leaving of the proposed assessments for the fiscal year 1819. And I am available for any questions, if you have any.
Councilmember Molsen?
Yeah, it brings up all kinds of questions. But for the benefit of our audience, if, and it's the obvious question, if someone lives in an area that is not covered by a lighting, a lighting and landscaping district, who pays for the streetlights? Who pays for the street maintenance? Where does that money come from? I'm pretty sure I know the answer, it's general fund.
Well, I'll take a first shot at that, is, the answer is either the general fund or Fund Six, is Parks and Rec for parks that are within-
Or parks that are within-
Uncovered areas, and then a number, majority of the streetlights are paid for from the, the road fund, so out of your streets, gas tax funds that could be used to fix our roads, we're having to pay for streetlights and stuff.
We don't have to adopt a pothole program. Yeah, so if the current LLCs that aren't keeping up with the inflation, and are basically in the red, a couple, two of them are, those funds come out of General Fund Two to make up that difference, I would assume. It's either that, or you turn off the streetlights.
That's correct, and the city has been subsidizing to some extent the two, well, all three districts last year, and for several years, we've been reporting that we're running in a deficit. The city, we've not yet recommended that we take the more draconian measures of rounding out parks or letting streetscapes die, but we are going to be coming back, as Mr. Forrest indicated, with some workshops for the full council to talk about options, and ultimately develop some recommendations and strategies going forward. It's clear that the limitations that are on the lighting and landscape districts are not covering the costs, particularly for those that are frozen in time. At the time Prop 218 was elected, the prior two districts grandfathered in, they are not currently compliant with what the regulations of 218 would require. So if we were to try to endeavor to raise the fees in the two that are losing money at this time, we'd have to completely reformat the districts to bring them into compliance, Prop 218. It's, it's a legacy problem that exists all over California. Many other cities and counties are struggling with this. We had some, in my former life, some 60 lighting landscape districts with the county to our south, and they were all facing the same problem, they were stuck in time.
Okay, so, just for the benefit of our audience, it's, you know, the situation we're in, and just so everybody knows, when your SMUD bill goes up, does the city's SMUD bill go up? I would assume the answer is yes. Yes, when, you know, the health insurance, life insurance, gas prices, when all that stuff goes up, so does the city's. So if we don't keep up, that's why we end up in the red. Okay. That's my soapbox.
Any comments?
No comments.
So, my only thing, just I did want everybody to understand that the West Side and the Northeast, those residents will not see any increase. This is, this is a yearly, we have to do this by law, yearly, say that we want this assessment done, otherwise we can't collect the assessment, there'd be no change in their property tax. It's a, it is set. And then, and the number three is going to see a 3.1 percent, about $10, a little less than $10 a parcel, increase in that one, because it was set up differently at the time in which it was implemented.
Correct.
My other question is, a couple of questions, because we talk about the excess, I just have a question about, are we, have we switched our lighting to LED? I mean, I mean, we talk about the costs of the districts, and I know we do things to try to save money, but I was just kind of curious about LED lighting and our streetlights, are they still, are they, have we switched over? I know it's a major project to switch to LED lighting.
The answer is yes, in part. We have done several projects to upgrade city-owned streetlights in certain areas. Takes money to save money, and when you're upside down in a fund balance, hard to find the capital to, to invest in new lights to save money in the long term, but that'll be part of the solution set that we're looking at. Very coincidentally, staff are meeting, started meeting with SMUD this week.
I was going to ask if we had partnership with SMUD regarding the issue.
SMUD is planning a project to, approximately a third of the lights in the city are owned by SMUD. We pay them a tariff monthly for, for light, depending on lumens that it puts out or the wattage, and that includes an ownership fee and a replacement cost. SMUD has fully amortized a lot of the lots, lights, older lights in town, sort of the, sort of the hatted poles that you see, those are typically older SMUD-owned lights, and they have just contacted us in the last week or so, and preliminary meeting was held. They're planning a retrofit project to change those all out to LEDs. We would expect that that will hopefully provide some rate relief to, to those lights, and will come in under a lower fee schedule.
And in addition, the city received a Department, California State Department of Energy grant in the late 2000s, and we retrofitted about 180 of what's referred to as the Cobra Arm streetlights, mostly on the west side of the city. Any new development that goes in are installing LED lights from Creekside Three, River Oaks Three B, River Oaks Three C, currently under construction, all those will be installing LED streetlights. The other aspect-
I just look at it as a little bit of savings, right? Something we might be able to do to-
Right. In addition, one of the things, previously, streetlights with SMUD were a flat rate based upon the wattage of the light, and SMUD, as with a lot of things, they're getting away from that pricing model, and now all streetlights go through a meter. Previously, they did not go through a SMUD meter, and like I said, it was strictly, you know, making up a number, $5 per month, per 200-watt light, that was the charge from SMUD. But now, all new streetlight installations now go through a SMUD meter, so we're actually being charged for the energy usage with LED lights, and so, we haven't had an installation yet, but for certain streetlights, we're going to go to a dimming, you know, say, like after midnight, they'll dim, they'll have a motion sensor, so if someone walks by or whatnot, they'll go on to full brightness. Previously, you know, under the old pricing model, it didn't make any sense to use, pay for that kind of control system, but now that we're actually paying for the usage, we'll realize those savings through SMUD.
And I know one of the other items, it's, areas that, besides parks and, and some of the landscaping, are the sound walls are maintained under the lighting and landscape district, correct?
Generally, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, I, it's one of the things that concerns me is that some of, especially on the west side, and I, I understand that, you know, it doesn't have an increase, and, but, you know, the sound wall's getting older, the sound wall, particularly the sound wall on A Street, when you walk that pathway now, that sound wall really needs some maintenance, whether or not that comes out of, you know, lighting and landscape, and we all hate the idea of cutting services or, or doing anything, but that, that sound wall, I, you know, I walk that area regularly, and that sound wall is really getting old and showing its age, and is the stucco and, and some of the issue with it, and the, the need for it to be painted, and I, I keep thinking it'd be a great community project for somebody, because it really is. I keep looking at it, thinking, bring paint out here and paint this wall, but, anyway. Okay, any further questions? We need to open public comment?
What's the one with the public hearing?
Public hearing. Open public hearing on the West Side Galt Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, 1992. Any public comment?
Question on there, please.
Go ahead and come to the, if you can come to the mic, Mr. Farmer.
Can I comment on any of the three?
We'll hold a public session, hearing for each one.
Mayor, we will need the public comment for, if it's specific to each landscaping and lighting district, we'd need it with each public hearing, because we will have to hold three separate public hearings.
But I can comment on any of the three, or?
Well, we're on the west, so we'll-
We're on the west side.
We'll have a public hearing for the west side.
Okay, well, let me look at my questions to see if any of them pertain specifically to three. I guess, yeah, I can make a short comment. I want to thank the mayor for making the comment about the sound wall, that was in there. I too live in that area, and that sound wall's in major need of weed abatement, so obviously, I'm a big advocate of the lighting and landscape in principle. I obviously am very pro beautification of Galt, whatever it takes, I expressed this to Mr. Plazo and Ms. Boyd and Mr. Solis in our meeting, that I am all for any device that will help our city look better, as long as the money's being spent, and the people feel like they're getting their money's worth, so we just want to be sure of that. So that was my only comment regarding the west, so I guess I'll have to come up on the other ones.
We'll be on wait, we'll, we'll be getting to it, so if you're on wait, any further public comment? Close the public hearing on West Side Galt Lighting and Landscape, open the public hearing for the east side. Do you want, do you want us to vote individually after each one?
Yes.
Okay. Close the public hearing, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve it. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Molsen, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Public hearing for the, I lost my thing. East, east side?
Northeast.
Northeast.
No, west, west side Galt.
We just did west side.
Did west, so, open the public hearing.
No, we did northeast first, I'm sorry.
Oh, I did west, I said west.
Oh. But northeast was listed first, but that's okay, we can go back.
Okay, so we'll do the public hearing for the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District. Open the public hearing.
Got that straight.
Mr. Farmer?
So first, I want to thank the city manager and the finance director for meeting with me the other day, didn't have a lot of questions at the time, because I actually hadn't had a lot of time to, to prepare questions, I had a busy week, so, but I was able to kind of take in what we talked about, and I just had a couple of questions. Mainly, one of them was regarding, so on page 13 of the, of the report for the east side, there is line item 6073 that mentions heat, light, and power, and then, there is a line item in the same paragraph under 6093, which listed as utilities electrical, so I was just thinking like heat, light, power at $82,000, and then utilities electrical at $70,000. I was just wanting some clarification, maybe I can get some further breakdown of that, because it just seems like electricity and power are the same, and those are two big costs, two of the, some of the biggest costs in there, so I just had a question about that. And then on page 92, under the future paragraph, it mentioned, actually, that's about LLD 3, so I'll have to come back to that. There was some talk, and Mr. Forrest kind of addressed it already, he mentioned that there, you guys were going to be looking at future options that would be better to suit this than the LLD, like, more or less in a nutshell, that the LLDs are becoming kind of outdated, the concept of it, I guess. So I would love to hear what those are. I, like I said, I'm all for anything that's going to do a better job. Obviously, if these are fixed and they cannot be raised, and they're in the, the red, then we have an issue. I do kind of go along with what the mayor was alluding to earlier, where she was talking about lighting, I mean, obviously, if there's no way to increase revenue, well, maybe we should start looking at the expenditures, and I know things go, go up over time, there's no changing that, but I do saw the two biggest costs were admin and professional services, professional services being told to me, as explained, being like landscape companies and, and things that are hired, professionals that are hired to do those services, so I think, you know, it's just good that we look back and say, okay, if we can't raise revenue at all, let's look at what we're spending, is there anything we can do better? Is there any way we can chop costs? And I'm not saying that you guys aren't doing that now, but I'm just, again, this is, this is some of the public that's come to me, saying, are we spending the money the best we can? It's always the question that I get brought to me, people ask, you know, hey, can you go say this for us? So, people just want to get their money's worth, it's the typical question that's brought to my attention. Other than that, I think that was it for this particular district. I just have one more question for the next, I guess I'll wait for that one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Public hearing closed. Do we have a motion?
Move the engineer's report. Approval of the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman, Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District number three, public hearing, open the public Comments?
A lot of public participation tonight. I only had one question about the LLD 3, so, to be clear, this is the only one that, for the first time in many years, which the report explains, and Mr. Forrest also confirmed, is the only one that's actually in the black for the first time, he said, "in a number of years," was his quote. So my question is, this is the only one that we're asking to get the increase for the CPI, and $10 honestly is no money at all, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I think most citizens, once they understand it's $10, they don't have a problem with the $10, they just want it to be clear on all the details. So my question is, if this one is, for the first time in a number of years, now in the black, then why at the meeting the other day, if I'm correct, was I told by you, Ms. Boyd, or it was Mr. Plazo, I forget, that you guys are speculating that it will become insolvent in the next few years, and so that's why you're trying to basically, you know, we want to make sure we get ahead of that? So, I'm curious of how it has now started to become profitable, or, for the lack of a better term.
Profitable.
And now, profitable. It's become, you know, it, it's covering its own costs, and then now, but you're saying it's, you, you estimate that it's going to be insolvent, so that theory of that is kind of strange to me, but that was the only question I had, I don't know if you can comment on now, or maybe somebody can ask or answer that question later, so, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
I have a question.
If you'll come to the podium, please, state your name for the record.
My name's Tom Neil. So, it sounds like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul for these different resources, and I get, you guys get that, so, what is it that has us backed into a corner that doesn't allow us flexibility to do some forward thinking to avoid these conditions of being insolvent or- do some forward thinking to avoid these conditions of being insolvent, or we're taking money from this zone to pay for that zone, we're taking from Parks and Rec? At some point, we're gonna run out of these options, it sounds. And now, I don't know the legalese associated with that, but I can count, as all you can, what is the plan that you guys have as a committee to prevent us from getting into that point? I don't quite understand. This isn't something that just happened overnight. And on the districting, I heard you mention the nineteen nineties. Does that reference to lot sizes or area, or is that dollars?
No, nineteen ninety is when the districts were formed, which was pre Prop two eighteen. And so, Prop two eighteen put restrictions on increasing assessments without going to a vote of the people. And so, the, what we've been doing is kept the assessments the same since the district's inception. So, the nineteen ninety is referencing the year.
So, we're twenty-something years later, and we haven't gone to the community to say, hey, this decision that was made twenty-something years ago is no longer getting us where it should have twenty-something years ago, and now we have all these districts that are in the red. So, my question is, what is it that's got us back into this corner that doesn't allow us the flexibility to make good decisions going forward? We know that some of these districts have pressures that the people who live in those districts can't help. Are we then to say that this side's gonna look nice and this side's not, we're gonna shut off lights? No, we don't want to say that.
We don't want to say that.
What's our plan then? Obviously, the plan we have now is working, because two or three are red. That's my question.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
Do you want me to get his name?
No, just go ahead and state your name for the record. No problem.
Julie Clark, for the record. And, um, this is not specific to any particular LLD, it's just a general comment. I guess it's a little disturbing to hear that there's alternatives that we could be pursuing in terms of, um, alternative energy or light fixtures or what have you, and I'm sure that there's even more forward-thinking kind of approaches that we could use. And if I'm not mistaken, we recently received a fairly large grant from the Energy Commission. But rather than applying for funding to do something like this, forward-thinking that would actually benefit the people, we're using the money to make plans for more modifications that the citizens are not interested in and have not asked for. So, that's where my problem is. It's over, it's, let's see, that portion of it's five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, I think it was six hundred and forty thousand dollars altogether. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money that could be used to make changes that would actually benefit the people. So, instead of taking from parks, pay, I mean, who, who would think, your streetlights, the money would come from parks? I, that's like seeing the Parks and Rec workers walk down the street and changing the trashcans. I don't understand that either. That seems like a public works type of a, a job, but maybe I'm mistaken. So, anyway, I, I'd just like to see a little more accountability and forward-thinking in terms of how we're using money from the government that we get as grant funds and stop always looking to the people for the money. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Public meeting, public comment closed. Any further discussion?
She just stood up to talk, the girl in the yellow.
What?
I think the girl in the yellow stood up to talk.
Did you want to?
I didn't want to make a comment.
Okay. Go ahead. We'll reopen the public hearing. Name for the record, please.
My name is Daisy Henzo. I am new to the city of Galt. My husband and I just bought in the Elliott Homes development last year. Um, I am in the northeast side, so the cost increase isn't going to be affecting us. And being here and learning about the ballot that was approved in the nineteen nineties and how it affects us today, um, I just don't understand why we can't go around, like you guys said, that you would need to go and ask, I guess, the people in the different districts if they'd be okay with the increases, because the law prevents you guys from just increasing their districts or the other two districts. So, why can't we do that, is my question? Why, what's preventing us from doing that? Why haven't we done that if all three districts have been in the red prior to last year with the one that we're increasing now being in the black, I guess, is the term that you guys use? So, that's my question, is why haven't we done that? As a resident of Galt, I am okay with paying more if I know it's gonna benefit the city. I keep hearing of different increases for, um, water, um, gas now, pensioning is gonna raise and things like that, so I'm okay with paying more, but I want it to be used properly, and I don't want to be continually hearing that everything is in the red and we're finally gonna do something about it years and years and years later. It's like, why don't we address the things when they're happening or prior to them happening? So, that's my question, and that's, I guess, what I'm wondering.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? Public hearing? Close the public hearing. Just, I'd just like to make one comment, and that's, you know, the lighting and landscape district hasn't always been in the red. It, that's been, it's been a gradual thing. It, you know, as costs have gone up, of course, it hasn't been. In nineteen ninety, when that, just when those districts were formed, um, the laws were different. There wasn't, Prop two eighteen had not been passed, and at that point, if there was need be, we could raise it to meet the cost of the district. That's not true anymore. When lighting landscape three was formed, and staff can correct me, when it was formed, it had a, an automatic increase put into it. It's one of the reasons why it was formed, was so that it, there could be an automatic increase. And so, to increase the lighting and landscape assessment, to change it, it would not, it would not need to go just before the people in those districts, it needs to go citywide. And there's a large portion of the city in the older homes that don't pay a lighting and landscape fee at all. And so, one of the things that staff's recommended, and we, those of you that were here, we talked about extensively in the budget hearing, is that staff have been directed to come back to us about doing some alternatives and how we're going to meet the cost of lighting and landscape district. So, you will see us having special meetings and workshops just to discuss the lighting and landscape district, probably my, is early next year, Gene? Is it, we're talking about early next year?
Yes.
January.
You have anything else?
Talk about the weighted.
Well, I do, of course.
If you would, if you were interested in some of the questions I think I heard, I'm happy to answer regarding some of the legal issues with the proposition two eighteen process. So, there are the two, uh, landscape and lighting districts that were formed pre-proposition two eighteen, so they are set that way unless you go through a new proposition two eighteen process, which requires not only a new, more detailed engineer's report, but the ballot process, which is actually a property owner ballot process, it's a weighted ballot process, so it's within each district based on the properties, not necessarily citywide, it's within that, that assessment district. There are different, there are very different voting procedures under Prop two eighteen, depending on which one you fall under. But they are not using the funds from one district to pay for improvements in another district, just to clarify. So, that's part of the issue, is you're restrained by using the funds within that assessment district area. Uh, so, just wanted to clarify that issue, but it is sometimes difficult.
The excess in District Three stays in District Three.
Stays in District Three.
Yes.
And some of the issues with doing the proposition two eighteen process is, we will, part of what we'll be looking at is whether that is a feasible option. Uh, it just is sometimes difficult to get the, the vote you need, the majority of weighted ballots based on the property size, and it's an expensive process to go through, uh, which a lot of communities have not had success with. So, that, those are things that we will be looking at, though, in the, in January, when, um, was it January? Looking at all the, we, and we've been going through those options now and trying to figure out what, how to address these issues.
And I do have one comment about, you know, why are we, you know, all of a sudden in, in the red, and why haven't we addressed this sooner? Well, when these things, when these lighting and landscaping districts were formed in nineteen ninety, and they're just now starting to turn and go into the red, something happened during that period, and I would say the city has done a heck of a good job in controlling the costs over that period, with the costs going up, and just now, starting to get into this problem. So, I, you know, you have, you don't lose sight of that. I think the, the city and city staff did an amazing job going this long on what we had.
Any further comment? Do we have a motion? Public hearing's closed. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval and adoption of, uh, resolution for District number three.
Well, second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Molson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Molson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, five oh vote. City manager's office authorized the city manager to execute an agreement with Heine Ender Leader, Day.
HDL.
HDL. And Associates for Economic Development Services.
I wasn't going to dare try and pronounce that, so, HDL is usually what they go by. That's the formal name. So, good evening, Mayor, members of council, Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. The item before you this evening is related to a contract with HDL, and, um, I think everybody is familiar with HDL as it relates to sales and use tax. Um, they do the analysis for the finance department. Sales and use tax, they also do a lot of the, um, in-depth budget forecasting as it relates to the budget for sales and use tax, and what's projected to come through in future years. This contract is a little bit different. HDL has an arm called Econ Solutions, and Econ Solutions has been handling, um, economic development services for local government agencies up and down California. Barry Foster is here this evening, he's actually the representative with Econ Solutions, and we'll be speaking a little bit about what they do. As you know, um, I currently conduct retail recruitment. I am part-time, I work in economic development, um, in the department, and I'm here twenty hours a week. And so, my time is spread really amongst several different things. Retail kind of takes a backburner because of projects that we have going on, wayfinding that's coming up, um, different requests that come through from Greater Sacramento that we're trying to, um, respond to. And so, what we've done is talked a little bit, um, with the city manager about, you know, how do we offset, um, the retail component? How do we bring in somebody maybe that has a little bit of experience that can help us on that end? Because it is such an important part of what's happening in the community and with the city as it relates to revenue generation primarily. Um, cities, as you know, generate most of their revenue through sales and use tax. And so, um, Econ Solutions is, has lots of experience as it relates to retail recruitment. Um, they do provide other services and studies as it relates to economic development, but primarily, what we're looking for from them is regarding the, um, retail component. And we have lots of vacant retail land that we have been pushing. I think after the last, uh, meeting that I was here, I spoke about the economic development update, ICSC show in Monterey, and the fact that we've had some of the retailers that just are a little lukewarm to the, the market here because of our population being a little bit smaller and us having, um, an extensive amount of retail in both the El Grove area and in Lowdy. And so, convincing them that, you know, we have this broader trade area than just Galt has been a little bit difficult. And so, one thing that Econ Solutions brings to the table is the fact that they actually have access to our sales tax data, they also have access to lots of other communities in California. And so, what happens there is they're able to, you know, show a comparison of what our retailers are doing comparatively to other cities in the community, or in the state. And I think that that brings a whole different perspective to the retail recruitment level. It's not the city coming and saying, hey, we have this great market, you should come and, you know, take a look. It's a third party that has the data to show, this is the trade area, this is who's shopping in the community, and these, you know, this is the distance that people are driving. We have people coming in from Wilton, we have, um, you know, the Thornton area, we have Harold, there's a much larger trade area than just the community of Galt, and I think that that gets missed a little bit. And so, having a third-party consultant like HDL assist us, I think, brings a lot to the table. Um, in addition, Barry, in particular, has extensive contacts with the development communities in California and with the retail communities in California, and I think that that one-on-one relationship is really important when it comes to, um, at least demonstrating what the market is here and how much housing development we have going on, and what our growth pattern is. And so, I would like to introduce Barry briefly, just to speak on HDL, and then at the end, I'll wrap up the presentation so that we can, um, hear from council.
Uh, my name is Barry Foster, I'm the managing director, uh, with HDL. I, I manage Econ Solutions. It's a division that we started up about a little over four years ago to focus on economic development. During those, uh, four years, we've done work for over sixty cities, and, and we don't have one way that we do things, we have a, a variety of products and services that we can customize to, to fit the needs of, of the community. One of the big things that, that we've done, and we're working probably with about thirty or thirty-five cities right now throughout the state, probably fifteen or sixteen of those, we're doing retail recruitment, um, support. As Amy talked about, we have strong relationships. I worked for, uh, twenty-three years for four different cities and helped facilitate probably thirty million square feet of development, a lot, a lot of shopping centers. So, built up those relationships with retailers, restaurants, site selectors, and so, when we're talking to, uh, to Panera Bread about an opportunity, um, we're working on three different transactions right now, um, they know we have some validity, and, and that we have a full market analytics package that, that we have that kind of tells that story and paints that picture. And, and so, oftentimes, we can leverage those relationships and get somebody interested in a trade area. And really, it, it's looking beyond just the city, it's a trade area. And so, they're, they're looking at, um, a potential user, is, is there a customer there, can they make money? And, and so, the more information that we can provide, the better. Uh, we've helped facilitate, uh, forty different transactions, where we filled up vacant spaces, um, some ground-up development, um, we have relationships, and we do work for a lot of developers throughout the state. So, the, the total package that we have, um, can really bring a lot of different tools to a community. We're, we're very involved in, in, uh, all the international council shopping center events. We go to Las Vegas, I was up there in May, it was the twenty-seventh year that I've been there. Um, I had forty-seven meetings in two and a half days. It's, it's pretty rapid fire, and, and so, again, we were up there for about fifteen different cities. We also do the event that Amy talked about in Monterey, which I find a little bit more useful, a little more effective, and we also do the one in Los Angeles that used to be in San Diego, um, in October. And so, those are opportunities to get your foot in the door, but then you gotta follow through, and you gotta, you gotta tell that story, paint that picture on why you think your trade area is a good fit. So, we're excited about Galt and, and, and looking at the opportunity to work with you. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Uh, my only question or comment is, I, I understand that, that, uh, the advantage here using HDL is, uh, the data. Um, I, I personally can't see any way that the city by itself, and the city staff by itself, can actually mine and get this data and present it to these companies in a, a manner that they, they're used to. I, I just don't, I just don't see how the city by itself could do that.
And that, and that's, that's important, that, that's a huge advantage that we have. We, we do work for probably four hundred cities and counties in California for sales tax. We have ninety-nine point one percent of every sales tax, uh, data for every business in California, and so, that, that comp, that's confidential, but I can find ways that we can use that when we're trying to tell that story and paint the picture, and looking at a, a certain retailer and show, we can actually cherry pick and look at the, their best locations in the state, and, and look at comparing those trade areas and trying to find a good match, and maybe it's, it's eighty-five percent of the match for Galt. match. And maybe it's 85% of the match for Galt. That's pretty impressive. And so you can, that information is huge in telling that story.
So when we talk about economic development, Amy, oftentimes I think that the community doesn't understand about us bringing, about us attempting to bring businesses to the community. So can you kind of explain and how the process works? I mean, private, it's private industry. I mean, it's private business.
Can't make them.
The property is owned, not owned by the city. We zone it. So we zone it commercial. So can you explain how that process works? Because I think oftentimes, people think that the city is, even though we're investing in you and we're investing in this, to help property owners and landowners to be able to develop and to be able to come to our community, it's really in not solely, it's not a city responsibility, or it's just not, you know, the property owner has to agree. It has to be a good deal for.
And I think there's two pieces to that. One is that when we do retail recruitment, and when I go to ICSC this year, I was able to bring Tia from the building department with me, which has a lot of experience in planning and understanding kind of the market. She's been here for a long time. We went in and we talked to these retailers, and A, they want to know where a location is for them. So talked to Ross. Yeah, we like Galt. We would love to come there. Where can we go? Well, we don't have a location, an existing building, large enough for them. Well, they want to be next to existing soft good users, which are other clothing stores, apparel stores, home goods stores. We don't have any of those. And so there's a lot of pieces that you have to sort of fit into the puzzle in order to make a project work for a company. And so that's one piece. You know, we do have the Simmerhorn property, which is a large piece, 45 acres. That's a big area to fill for commercial. Likely, it will develop with something else besides just commercial. You have pad site development with restaurant and retail, but you also have, you know, potentially mixed use. That's really where the wave is now when it comes to development is infusing pedestrian-oriented type uses. So apartments as part of it. But even developing that, you really have to have a good developer, a good site plan, and they have to have relationships. And we have to have folks like Barry who have the relationships with the retailers to go and actually propose that. Simmerhorn at this point is not there. And unfortunately, no matter what, we have to rely on the developer to bring the retail and to make the deal work. As it relates to things like Dollar Tree, the existing Dollar Tree space, we've talked to lots of different retailers on the location and trying to convince them to come into the center. It's a grocery-anchored center, so that really limits who you can talk to and who would be interested. It's a unique footprint at 6,000 square feet, and so there's a very small window of retailers that would be willing to go into that space. Some of them want second-generation space, less expensive, don't want to pay the rent. And so, you know, there's a lot of things that have to fit in order for retail to consider your location. Daytime population is huge. How many people work in your community? If you want us to fill our restaurants during the day, you have to have people here during the day. And so you can't just rely on the individuals who are, you know, the kids are in school or the stay-at-home moms, because that's really not going to fill all of these restaurants. And so, you know, they consider a lot of different factors. And with existing spaces, you know, Dollar Tree, for example, that's a commercial zone property. There's lots of different commercial users could go in there. Office users could go in there. Medical uses could go in there. That's a zoning code thing. We can't prohibit anybody that fits in the zoning. And so we've had that issue with across the street and some of the locations or businesses that have gone into the Galt Plaza. It's a competitor. It's, you know, the same type of use that's going in. You have frozen yogurt, and then you have Rita's that, you know, comes in. And we got blamed for it, and really, we have no control over that. That's market-driven. And so there are, you know, lots of things that retailers look at, they consider, and it's a matter of, you know, us kind of telling that story, like Barry said, and really making sure they have the analytics and the trade area data. And, you know, leakage data is another one. We have significant sales tax leakage because people are shopping outside of our community. So kind of telling that story to these retailers so they understand what the market is here is going to be really important moving forward.
So Dollar Tree being a really good example, as to what part the city plays in that. You're basically assisting the property owner, the real estate agent, the, in being able to help them market that. I mean, that's the part the city plays. The city doesn't ultimately make the decision because our responsibility is with zoning, not with saying, oh, no, we don't want that business there. We want this business there. That's really up to the property owner. I mean, it's free enterprise. I mean, I guess that's what I want people to understand. As much as we want to assist and bring the businesses and bring the...
We get in front of the retailers and we talk to them, and we make sure they're aware of what's available and where we have space available and where they would fit and where they, you know, would potentially have a good business. And it's up to them to take that and move forward. And I work closely with the brokers who represent the real estate shopping centers here in town. And so, you know, every couple of weeks, I check in, send them leads, things that I think of in the middle of the night that might be a good use for the 6,000 square feet at Dollar Tree. And, you know, Big Five was one that came across, and we talked to them at ICSC. And initially, they liked the location. It came down to rent terms. I mean, in lease terms, sometimes that's really what plays into it, how much the landlord is willing to give. And that's out of our control.
And we don't control that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other more questions?
Well, you know, my comment is that as a city, we can't make a retailer move here. We get asked this all the time, you know, why can't you make Home Depot, you know, put a store in Galt or Big Five? We can't make them do anything, okay?
And even by offering incentives, you know...
What we can do is we can market our city so they want to come here. That's the flipside of it. We can't make them come here, but we can't, we can't sell City of Galt and have them want to come here on their own.
And there are, and we've talked to the brokers, and we've talked to the developers, and they're very well aware of the city's willingness to put incentive packages together. It really just depends on, you know, having a developer and a concrete retailer who's interested. So they're aware of that. It's, you know, it really comes down to, it's market-driven more than anything.
And I'm really glad to hear that we're thinking outside the box as far as population, because that's the problem we've been running into, is that there's that magic number we haven't reached yet with the local population, but they don't think about the outlying population, which are a lot of our tax monies coming in as well.
You know, in Wilton, being closer to Elk Grove, we hear a lot from residents in Wilton that they shop here because they don't want to battle with the traffic and the, you know, the amount of people that are in Elk Grove. And so they'd rather make the extra drive to come shopping at our Rayleigh's.
Rayleigh's is, yeah, Rayleigh's is a success story on that. It surprised them on the amount of business that store did, because they were just looking at it as a smaller area. And it turns out that, you know, it's halfway between commute, you know, up to the foothills, so people would stop here and do their shopping.
You mentioned something, and it really, it kind of intrigued me because it's worked well in this community. So we're looking towards possibly using mixed use over in the Simmerhorn area?
I think that it's a possibility, you know, depending on the developer and the willingness. The developer that owns the property currently would love to incorporate some type of apartment use and mixed use on the project.
I think that would be a big hit with your millennials, because that's a big thing for them. If it's not walkable, they don't really want to do it.
The big box, you know, lifestyle centers are sort of to the wayside. It really has come down to making it pedestrian-oriented and incorporating a lot of different retail uses and pedestrian uses and activities and outdoor spaces. And, you know, you have to be able to activate the space, so.
Galt Place and the Peck Building shortly will be a good example of that.
Exactly.
Other comment? Thank you, Amy. Do I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a public comment. Mr. Farmer?
Good evening again. I just have a few questions. I read this report really thoroughly, and I just had a few questions. So I get the gist of it. We're basically, to use kind of an analogy, it's like we're hiring a sports agent to like go out and, you know, solicit teams for Galt. You know, we want to find retailers. Mr. Foster has connections. He can entice people and explain why Galt's a good market, et cetera, et cetera. So in the report, though, there was a few things. One, was there a term on the contract? Because it said, it just had, it just had a, not to exceed $24,000, but it didn't say. And there is rates on how much per hour and what was broken down. So my question is, is it just, is it just we use their services until we reach the 24, and then we decide to renew or whatever? Or is it like a set time, we're paying them $24,000 for X amount of time? That was one thing. Is that what breaks down, is there's a rate, basically, we're paying them a fixed rate of $4,000 for a particular report and $5,000 for another analysis. So at least $15,000 for what they specify as business attraction. So basically, out of the $24,000, $15,000 of it, we're going to be paying them to go out and find us business to, you know, advocate on our behalf. So at the rates they're proposing, if you average it out, it's like 94 hours. We're basically going to get 94 hours of work for business attraction out of them, which I'm not saying is a bad or good. I'm just looking at it from a number standpoint. I also would like to know if Ms. Mendez is going to be directing, you know, overseeing tightly what they're looking for, because it says that, and it says, actually, the verbiage here is that the director, meaning Ms. Mendez, would from time to time be pointing out or directing. So I just want to know, is like, just occasionally, she says, hey, this is what we want, or she can closely supervise whenever she wants? She can call him up, you know, twice a week or three times a week or once a month and say, hey, this is what we're looking for? I would like to know if we're targeting something specifically, like with Amy, with her know-how. She's been here long enough. Her and I have been in many meetings together. She knows that I'm an advocate for development of certain types and things and wanting to really make Galt a better community. But I'd like to know, is Amy able to go to Mr. Foster and say, hey, this is kind of what we're looking for. We're looking for, you know, something that would be like this or this, like she can name things. Or is it just like, hey, we're looking for anybody that'll look at Galt, just like, you know, just bring us anybody. We're desperate, like just whatever. Because as you all know, and many of you council members that have ran, one of the things that a lot of people talk about, and if you lived here long enough, like Mr. Campion's been here a really long time, is, you know, growth is a big deal with the community. You can split it 60/40, 50/50, whatever. You have a lot of people that just want tons of growth. You have other people that don't want any. It's a really slippery slope. So smart growth is always the best policy, meaning, you know, it was funny, the comment that was made by Ms. Mendez when you were talking about the Rayleigh Center and the people with Wilton. She said, well, Wilton, people from Wilton like to go shop in Galt because they don't have to deal with all the traffic of Elk Grove. But if we're not careful, pretty soon, they're going to be saying, well, I don't shop in Galt anymore because it's too much traffic, and now I'm going to go over here. So we have to be careful to specifically ask what we're looking for and what we're requesting, not just say, we want anything. I'm sure that's the case, because I know Amy has had great ideas when I've talked to her. And so I'm just, I just want to put it out there that, you know, we just don't want to just, you know, go nuts and just bust open the gates and go for anything. Because I would say that if you asked anybody in this community, whether they've lived here for 10 years or 50 years or a week, they're going to say, what do you like about Galt? They're going to say, I like the small-town charm. I like the small-town feel. So as we grow, which we need to and we will, we have to ask ourselves, what are the things that as we grow are we willing to do without? Because if I named five things that I really would want, like I would want a Chipotle and a Lowe's and XYZ, and I asked Mark and Ms. Huer and Ms. Settles and Ms. Lamson, you guys all named five things you would like to see here, if everybody got the five things they want, we won't be Galt anymore. So we have to be very careful that we all can, you know, get a lot of input from the community. I know we're reaching out to a consultant and saying, hey, but Mr. Foster doesn't know Galt. He can put our data together and all that, but he doesn't, he doesn't know what the citizens want. I think Amy has a good pulse on the community because she's been here long enough to kind of get that feel. I think that this is definitely the kind of topic that should be reached out to the community in some form or another and really kind of get the input from what people are really wanting and kind of get an idea of what people are really wanting instead of just deciding, that you all deciding that we think this is what Galt needs. Okay? Because this is, this is our, you know, what, you know, Galt, once we grow too big or get out of control, there's no going back. This is a one-shot deal. So just saying we should be careful. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Jean, would you like to answer any of?
Exhibit A is a term for one year.
Would you like to?
Ask Amy to answer.
Just the term of the contract.
The term of the contract is one year.
It's an Exhibit A.
After one year to determine whether or not it was worth the $15,000 for the business recruitment services. And the initial, you know, the 15 is the retail recruitment component. The other is the analytical and trade area data that has to be pulled together in order to put the marketing packages together. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comment? Discussion?
You have a motion, sir?
A motion?
I already have one.
Oh, a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, five oh vote. May Development Department, Galt Industrial Park Expansion Property Tax Exchange Agreement with Sacramento County was brought back from last meeting.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Huer and councilmembers. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you, as you noted, is a continued item from the June 19 city council meeting. At that meeting, staff provided an update and sought direction on the tax-sharing agreement for the industrial annexation project. As you may recall, the city council approved the industrial annexation tax exchange agreement that showed property tax only. The SAC County staff revised it to include property or sales tax and transit occupancy tax, or TOT. The sales tax generated from the area would only apply to car dealers or big-box retailers and other large-scale retailers. So it's unlikely that those type of retailers and TOT generators would be in the industrial annex. But staff opposed the language because we have or have the potential to have other annexations on the horizon that may include those users. So we presented three options moving forward, accept a revised tax-sharing agreement, including the sales and TOT language. We can continue to oppose and negotiate our way through the agreement or drop annexations altogether. The city council continued that item and then recommended that staff continue to talk to SAC County. So we did just that. We continued a dialogue with SAC County, and Mayor Huer, the city manager, and I met with Supervisor Natoli and county staff last Friday to try to resolve the issue. And after what is best described as a robust dialogue, Mayor Huer was able to appeal to the county and really get them to honor the original tax-sharing agreement. So the county did agree to move forward back with the original council-approved tax-sharing agreement. They removed the TOT language and the sales tax language. I'd like to add, though, that county staff was adamant that annexations in the future would include those. So they did want to make that clear, that they would honor the council-approved, but in the future, they will look to add the TOT and sales tax language. I want to thank Don Natoli for putting the meeting together and county staff for working with on us. We did get the resolution we were seeking for this annexation, so we're happy about that. At this point, there's no further action by council since you already approved the resolution approving that tax-sharing agreement. And we can address sales tax and TOT as they pertain to other annexations when those processes come forward. And with that, that concludes our brief staff report. We'll be available to answer any questions you might have.
The only thing I have to add is that the other part is moving forward, further annexations. They were willing to have further negotiations regarding those annexations. So when that time comes, they weren't close to having those kind of discussions with us about some of the things that, and I know everybody thinks they're unique, but some of the issues that make Galt a unique committee, a unique community. So I just really appreciate you and Jean's work and the county staff for, and for listening to us and having the meeting, and Don for all of his input. And so I think that it looks like it'll come before the county supervisors, and it'll have to be voted on and accepted by them. But at this point, it does appear to be that the county's going to honor their original agreement with us. So I'm really pleased about that.
We did appreciate their position. I mean, they are in the process of negotiating other tax-sharing agreements with other cities, and the dynamic with them is different. So we can appreciate the efforts that they had to go through and then the negotiations that they engage with the other cities. So it wasn't easy for them.
No.
Well, that's good news.
That was good news.
Going forward, though, I can see it being interesting in the future. My biggest hangup is we're not in their urban services boundary. So, you know, we have to pay for our wastewater treatment plant, and the other cities have SAC regional. So...
And we did discuss that.
There are differences there. And, you know, I'm sure we'll be discussing that in the future.
Yeah, we tried to underscore those differences. We did a quick little analysis we had sent out. I think that was in the previous staff report, but we agree with you that we are different than the other cities and counties.
Now, if, on the flip side, if the county wanted to step up and pay some of our overhead costs for the wastewater treatment plant and the regional parks that we have and stuff, I mean, you know, we can negotiate that, too. But it's good news. It's good news. We appreciate it.
Further questions? No. No vote necessary. So, yes. Okay. Write-off of Finance Department, write-off of uncontrollable, uncollectible debt policy? Is that a flip? Ms. Boyd?
Good evening, Mayor Huer, members of the council. I'm Emily Boyd, Finance Director. And I have to say that sometimes the individuals that we're trying to collect money from do feel like they're a little bit uncontrollable, so. So first off, I'd like to comment on why are we bringing this policy to the council? Back in May, we had the auditors, the auditors came out and did their interim fieldwork. And one of the things that they noted was that the city does not have a write-off policy, and they recommended that we have one. And it's fairly common, best practices to have this sort of policy in place. So that's why we're bringing it to you this evening. The city hasn't had one before. Purpose of a write-off policy is to ensure that all reasonable diligence... reasonable diligence has been used to collect accounts receivable. Also, it improves the measurement, the financial measurement of the city's receivables, and it ensures the efficient use of the city's revenue collection process. And the policy statement is that it is the policy of the city of Galt to actively pursue a collection of past due accounts receivable, regularly review the status of past due accounts, and write off amounts determined to be uncollectible. So, how do we know when an account becomes uncollectible, and what due diligence has been undertaken to ensure that every effort has been made to collect this item? One of the things that happens in the utility department is that if an account is not paid, the services are shut off, and the account, they're not turned back on until the account is, is brought current. And that works for active current customers, but what if a customer now hasn't paid their bill, and they've closed their account, and they've gone away? One of the things that we do there is that we send these accounts to collections. Typically, the average utility billing account that is uncollected and sent to collections averages around three hundred and ten dollars. And the collection agency takes thirty percent of whatever they recover, and because of the small amounts, you know, unless they can attach that particular collection to some other debt that that, debt or owes, and thereby increase their, their profitability and their, their income, they quite often really don't make a whole lot of efforts to collect small amounts. It's not that profitable for them. The other thing that we can do is, on utility accounts, if where they're, if the debt is owed by the property owner, and they still own the property, we can levy it on their taxes, and we do that. And another thing that we do is, if a customer closes an account and goes away and comes back later, and owes us money, and wants to set up a new account, we have that record, and we then require them to make good on the past due amount that they never paid before, before we will open a new account. And also, on things that aren't utility rated, related, that are other types of receivables, we send invoices, reminder letters, collection letters, and every effort is made to collect the money that is due to the city. One of the things that may, may sound a little bit complicated, but is part of understanding the process, is that there is an accounting function called an allowance for doubtful accounts. And this is where there's a management decision made to determine how much of our receivables do we believe really can't be collected, and therefore, we would subtract that amount from our accounts receivable asset, so that when we have our financial statements showing our assets, we are not overstating them by stating we have receivables that we believe to be uncollectible. And the city has had a practice of, in the utility funds, of determining that eighty-nine percent of accounts over a hundred and twenty days old are uncollectible. And over the years, that amount has been recorded on the books. And what that does is, it's a contra account to an asset. So, you have your asset with the plus, and the contra account means it's a minus, so it reduces the value of your asset on your financial statements, so that you are more accurately reflecting what your true receivable is. In the utility accounts, there is a total receivable over a hundred and twenty days, quite a fairly large sum of money. And you have to realize that this, this amount goes back prior to two thousand and four. We went on the new accounting system in two thousand and four, and we brought forward there a number of accounts. There's one thousand, one hundred fifty-four accounts that are over a hundred and twenty days old. The total receivable there is three hundred fifty-eight thousand, fifty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Of that amount, in prior years, cumulatively, we have recorded as doubtful, doubtful accounts, two hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars and nineteen cents, leaving a net impact in fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, the year that we just closed, of a amount of sixty-two thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. So, we look at that amount, and then we would record eighty-nine percent of it as uncollectible for the fiscal year eighteen. We also have other accounts that are doubtful. What happens occasionally, it doesn't happen very often, but occasionally you'll have a deposit of some sort that was not made, where the city advanced funds, and then the deposit or reimbursement was supposed to have been made by some party, and it's not made, and we send them a bill, and we attempt to collect, and we go through all of that process of trying to collect that bill, and sometimes we're unable to do so. And some of them are very old, and the, and the other item that I noted in our, in the fiscal analysis, that in the developer deposit accounts, we are owed six hundred dollars that dates back to two thousand and eight. That developer's no longer around. There's really no way of collecting that six hundred dollars, so we would recommend that it get written off. So, how does that occur? What is the procedure for writing off accounts? First off, we need to designate the count as uncollectible, and that means we need to document all of those steps that were taken in an effort to collect the, the item. Then, we need to prepare a request for a write-off of the account. And then, we need to get the approval for the write-off of the account. Now, the staff report and the, and the policy make a recommendation on authorization levels. The council can, can accept that, or they can make a recommendation of their own, or a decision. The council can determine that different authorization levels should be used. But the ones currently being recommended are amounts up to five hundred dollars per account. The authorization is with the finance director to approve write-off of those, if it's property documented, of course. Excess of five hundred, and up to four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, authorized by the city manager, and any amounts of five thousand or greater should come to the city council for authorization to write that off. Now, on write-offs, it's, would be recommended that the council, the staff would report to the council annually on what amounts and accounts have been written off, so that they have that information readily available. So, what we're asking you tonight is to adopt a resolution approving the policy. And do you have any questions?
So, I have one. I read through the policy, and, and I agree with your statement that, at a minimum, you know, council should receive, at least annually, a report summarizing what the write-offs are for each fiscal year, but I don't see it written into the policy unless I missed that.
You know, I, I think that you're correct. I was looking at this this afternoon, and I was thinking that that clause hadn't been put in there. And what I'm wondering if we can do, if we add that clause in, on page two of the policy, under item three, if by motion, looking to the city attorney to see if we can do this, if by motion, we can make an amendment to the policy when they adopt it?
Yes. Okay.
The last sentence says, "Write-off of individual accounts with an outstanding balance due in excess of five thousand dollars must be approved by action of the city council."
But I'm talking about all others. I'm talking about a cumulative, the cumulative report on an annual basis.
Annual report on all of them.
The other thing, too, that obviously, I think the city manager could exercise the, the discretion, that if he chose not to write it off, he could forward it to the city council if it was somewhere in the two or three thousand dollar reins, and he wasn't comfortable or didn't agree with it, I don't know. But, uh...
Are there some issue with there's something? Yeah?
Certainly, that should be an option for the manager as well.
Emily?
Yes?
What kind of, I understand a lot of this is utilities. People who move out of the community, sold their homes during the recession, the bankruptcies, all of those sorts of issues, and, I mean, I had the issue myself. My mother moves out the beginning of August, but I don't get the final bill until October. So, you know, because of the way our billing cycle goes, so I think we end up with some of that problem ourselves, right? I mean, however we can, because it's changed into somebody else's name, right? Because they want to start their utilities. And then, people who choose to be not responsible, and don't pay their bills, choose not to pay their, choose not to pay their account. Or it was due in October, I guess it wasn't, but I didn't get it till then. It wasn't due until then. The other thing, the other, but what kind of bills do we have? So, I understand those utility bills running around three hundred or so. What kind of write-offs are we doing on items over five thousand, or between twenty-five hun, between the five thousand and, the five hundred and the five thousand?
To date, we haven't done any write-offs. The only thing that we have been doing is entering an allowance for doubtful accounts.
So, what kind of bills are unpaid at that level?
The main thing would be, as I mentioned, a developer deposit, that we advanced funds for something, and the developer never reimbursed us, or we were unable to collect that. I know that we do have one account in the developer deposit that exceeds five thousand, which, if you approve this policy tonight, we'll bring that back to you at some point to ask you to review it and possibly write it off. Doesn't happen very often, and it's very rare that that happens. Like, we have this one from two thousand and eight, and the other one is from a similar timeframe, and no further.
We have many developers and builders go bankrupt during the, during the recession, so it could have been that, due to a bankruptcy, sort of, and so then they just never paid us.
Yeah, that sort of thing happens. Most of the time, what we're doing with developers is we make sure we get deposits in advance of expending anything, and we're very careful to review that on a regular monthly basis, and make sure that we are not advancing funds we shouldn't.
Okay. So, Emily, if I'm understanding this correctly, the large amount is from two thousand and eight total, cumulative?
That's in the, no, that's the...
So, how much, how much every year do you usually have, people don't pay? How much, how much bad debt do we have?
And this year, it's approximately sixty-two thousand dollars remaining over, but it varies. It's not a, that amount is not going to be consistent from year to year. It's going to vary.
Sixty-two thousand, did I hear you correctly?
Yeah.
And by and large, utilities.
That's all utilities.
All utilities. So, people who aren't paying their utilities.
Those are accounts, as of June thirty, eighteen, that are a hundred and twenty days old, that we haven't previously recorded an allowance for doubtful accounts on them. You have to realize that that three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar item goes back at least to two thousand and four, and probably prior to that. We don't have the ability to, I mean, we did run the report, six hundred pages long. We opted not to bring that to you.
Do, do we still place liens on property?
We do. If the, if the bill is in the name of the property owner, we are able to levy their tax, on the taxes, and we do that.
Do, do we, I know some utilities, PG&E and stuff, you know, they, they run credit checks, and if you don't have, if you don't have a good credit rating, you put down a deposit. Do we ever collect deposits on people who start utilities here?
We require deposits on everyone who opens a utility account, and they can get that back if they have good payment. I believe it's for a twelve-month period, they can, they can get it back.
So, they put down a deposit originally, and then?
Yeah.
Well, I, my personal opinion is, I feel uncomfortable with the numbers. I, I think the finance director writing off up to five hundred, because it sounds like a lot of them are around three hundred dollars utilities. I think if we start getting over five hundred, I'm a little more comfortable if it's maybe the city manager authorizes up to twenty-five hundred. I think the ones that get above that, as a council member, I'd like to know what we're writing off when it starts getting up to be that level. I mean, particularly since it sounds like most of them are under the five hundred dollar range.
That's correct, yeah.
And those that are getting above that, I think, I just would like that the city council be aware of, of those accounts, or those accounts that we're writing off, because I, sixty thousand dollars sure could go a long ways. I mean, I mean, this is utilities. It's our water, and we're all paying all of that, and having to pay for...
We put it in a, in a staff report, and the name would lay out there.
There's, there's that.
And we, yeah, know the people that aren't, aren't paying their taxes and bills and things, right? So, yeah, so...
That's my, I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I'd really rather bring back the num, bring down the numbers.
Yeah. You know, if there's not that many of them, then there shouldn't be an issue.
True.
You know?
So, I could make, do we have any further discussion? So, I'd make a motion to approve the policy with the addition of a yearly report regard, a comprehensive yearly report, and a change that the, that items between five hundred to twenty-four nine nine nine, twenty-four nine nine, twenty-four ninety-nine, and that the city manager be authorized up to the twenty-four ninety-nine, and write-offs over twenty-five hundred must be approved by action of the city council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Huer, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Roll call, vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, five-o vote. Hold on one second.
Nothing tonight.
City clerks report?
I just have one thing, just to remind the public. The next city council meeting on Tuesday, August seventh, will start at three P, three PM, so that city council and the community can enjoy National Night Out.
And comments by staff, and I apologize, chief. Will you please report out on the, on the criminal justice?
Thank you, Mayor. On July twelfth, I represented the city and you, the mayor, at the Criminal Justice Cabinet. That's a cabinet with the presiding judge, district attorneys, defense attorneys, public defenders, police chiefs, and different representatives from within the county to talk about specific issues dealing with criminal justice. This last meeting, we talked about the Sacramento County Homeless Plan, and we also discussed the care program, which is assisted outpatient treatment for mental illness. So, it was a brief overview of both of those programs that are being launched. Most significant for us here in Galt is the, the homeless plan. They talked about four different areas of concern, and that is account within the county, what resources are available, and there's a couple other ones, not right off the top of my head, I can't remember, but the, the gist of it is, is that was our, our initial plan to start bringing all of the county agencies together, start talking about how we're going to address some of the major issues. Representing Galt, I reminded them that we are part of Sacramento County. A lot of times, we get forgotten because we're so far south, and we have a mutual commitment that we will be part of any discussions that they have regarding the homeless. Myself or one of the lieutenants will represent for the, some of the subcommittees, and they made a promise to bring the resources down here. So, that's the results of that meeting itself. I thought it was a very, very productive meeting. It's my, I believe it's my fourth one representing, and that was probably the most productive meeting we've had. Would you like me to continue with the other items?
Yes.
We have a couple other items. On July thirty-first, at seven-thirty, eight-thirty, we're having a coffee with a cop at the Velvet Grill at Creamery. So, we're very excited about that. National Night Out is August seventh from six to eight-thirty. And today, one of the many pleasures of my job is promotions, and so today, we promoted, it'll take effect on Monday, promoted Brian Azavito to the rank of sergeant. So, we're very, very pleased. Brian Azavito's been a police officer for over eighteen years, and he's been an active member of this community for, since two thousand and thirteen, and I think his, his training and experience and his leadership that he's already proven is going to fare well for our city, and so he starts swing shift on, on Monday as the swing shift sergeant. And that's it.
Exciting. Mr. Winkler?
Just a few quick things. I don't want to steal any of Mark's thunder, but we do have a couple of large construction projects going. The South Alt, Safe Routes to School project continues, although we're, we think we're rounding third, headed for home here. But there will be a two-day road closure for some critical construction activities on South First Street, just north of Cost. The signed detour, bringing folks around to New Hope. So, that'll be happening over the next two days, trying to get that street reopened, but there's going to be major dig-out and repair work going on, and to be safe, we just can't have that open with all that activity going on. And then, generally, that project is moving along well, working hard to get all those crosswalks in and striped, and street lanes back down before school starts. And then, on the other end of town, on the far east end out of Marengo, we've got the, the long-term road closure, trying to get that back open in the next couple of, three, four weeks before school starts at the high school, to reconstruct and realign north of the railroad spur, Marengo. That'll include a widened crossing, additional... Marengo, that'll include a widened crossing, additional lanes, parking, and bike and ped paths as well. We've been looking forward to that project for a long time, so we're, pardon our dust. We're going to get all those utilities underground as part of this project, and it's going to be a real, I think, boon to the future, so thank the community for their patience. And then lastly, I've got the stats as of yesterday for June water conservation. Got a nice hot month behind us, and we're continuing that trend here in July. Our water conservation dropped a little bit, 24% compared to the average of June 2013 and June 2014, but that's still pretty good, and we encourage residents to keep up the hard work. We're trying to stay away from mandatory water curtailment, and we appreciate the voluntary good work of our residents to keep that conservation number up.
Could you address the, could you explain about the green striping as part of the project?
You stole my thunder.
I can't, I'm trying to figure out whether to throw Mark under the bus or not, but...
Or Mark. And one of you will talk about the green striping.
Well, let me preface this, and Mark can give you more details.
It'll surprise him when you see it.
You'd want to know, probably, but, long story short, $4 million of the $5 million project are grant funds. It's actually four different grants that were cobbled together for an economy of scale to get us actually some very good bid prices, and various granting agencies worked with us to let us bundle that project. One of the grants was specifically a bike-ped safety component, and specifically, a lot of the reconstructed curbs and things are, why are you taking out a perfectly good handicap ramp at a corner to put in another handicap ramp or accessible, ADA accessible ramp? And the answer is because the old ones do not meet the current state or federal standards, and they go on our, our ADA transition plan of future improvements the city's going to have to fund. So it was going to have to get done eventually as, with the future projects, and so we got a grant to do all of that work with a very small local match. The other part of the safety for the bike is to create a very clear delineation between the bike lanes and the travel lanes and the parking lanes. A lot of times, the parking cars are kind of in the same zone where, where the, where the bikes are trying to ride, and people are opening car doors and things. And so this is actually on several key corridors, not every street in the city, is clearly delineating the bike lanes, widening and providing a full minimum of eight feet or more parking, depending on the roadway. And then coming up to key intersections where there's going to be a conflict between bikes that are wanting to go straight and cars that are wanting to turn right into a subdivision street, is to create that, that dashed and then solid, high-visibility green, a little bit like the school signs, or bright optic green, we call it. Well, this is to show both the biker, as he's pedaling head down, you know, going where he's going, he's coming up on a conflict point, and also is a subliminal visual message to the drivers that they're coming up on a conflict point. It's a, kind of like a wake-up call to look and make sure there aren't any bicycles before you just 30 miles an hour around that corner. And so it's on the lead-in, coming up to an intersection in the direction of travel for about 150 feet on some key high-volume locations where we've identified both cars, high-volume cars and a high volume of potential bike traffic. So it's a, it's a visual cue, it's kind of a pilot program for Galt, but you'll find them all over Sacramento, you'll find them up and down the valley, you'll find them in the Bay Area, and early results and studies are showing that drivers are subliminally, if not intentionally, paying attention to that, and we're seeing reductions in accidents. So in our case, we haven't had a lot of bike vehicle accidents, we've had a few, but not very many. Our goal is to keep that number down. So that's what the green bike lanes are about.
I've heard that it's other states, too, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
It's not just California, so. Because I've had people, you know, make comments bashing California regulations, and I don't, it's national, National Bike Association regulations, some what they want, I think.
So my, my last comment, which is, you know, we see some of the chatter on social media is be patient, it's, it's like painting your house, we're not done yet. Once you get the nice white stripes finished, it's, it's going to, it's going to be a nice look, and we do think it will increase safety, and we've been hearing a lot from various committees about, you know, bike and ped safety, and we're trying to capitalize on
it. Well, the roads look wonderful. The pavement on the roads, it looks great. It's such a, such an improvement. Chris?
Yeah, just wanted to let you know, we had a great planning commission meeting last week. The planning commission approved about 230 units in tentative maps. 224 were the small lots, single-family subdivision, the Greenwood cottages, south of Rite Aid. So they received their tentative map approval last week. And then also a six-unit townhome project at the corner of 7th and B Street. So we just added to our housing production list. And I also would like to thank Armando and his staff for helping set up the Chabola Center because we had no electricity in here last Thursday night. So staff had to scramble and set up a site in Chabola, and his staff and mine did a great job in setting that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily? Do you have anything, Mark?
No, I'll take the fifth.
Bill?
With the... New development on, along Marengo Road, when it's fully paved out, you'll see the green. Morale states when that develops, you'll see the green. So it's, it's the new standard.
Well, it has to do with safe school routes, right? I mean, kids riding bikes, but anybody riding bikes, but particularly like on Marengo, it's a school route.
Yeah. As a cyclist, I'm, I'm very aware, for example, at the entrance of Sacramento State University, where they actually had a bicycle fatality, that whole complicated intersection is green and checkered green, and, you know, just to get the vehicles and the bicycles, you know, where they need to go safely.
I've heard the green is the choice of the bicyclists, actually. I would have picked orange.
Cora?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Armando? Kim? Jean? Okay. Comments by city council members, future agenda items?
Go ahead.
I'd like to, I had Donna put on the dais for, anyway, I had her put on the dais. This is the agreement that was originally done between, that went to LAFCO when CSD took over our fire district. And I, I would like to have it a future agenda item, to ask for this, the council's agreement to have staff look into this. In the past, we had a member of our community that served for a very long time on the fire district. He retired two years ago, did not run for reelection. We did have a member, a member of CSD move into our community about that same time, so we continued to have representation on the CSD board. We no longer, as of this, as of this next election, we won't have any members of our community serving on our CSD board, which is our fire and emergency services. And in this agreement, there, there is talk about an advisory council and a, an advisory couns, a Galt advisory council, and also looking at issues regarding elections, and it, whether it was election by district. So I'd really like staff to look at this and come back to us with the consensus of the council, come back to us about, I don't know of any Galt advisory commissions, committee, so I don't think that that goes on. I don't know what CSD looked at and what the outcome was regarding that issue about representation on the board. It concerns me that we will no longer have any representation, or how do we become advisory to, to the CSD? So that, I just think that people need to be aware. I've been meeting with candidates running for CSD because it greatly concerns me that our council, that our city won't be represented any longer. So if I could get a consensus from the council that we could, to have staff come back to us with regarding, to do the research and find out what happened?
Yes.
Yeah. It's been a concern since, since it was originally formed like that, that eventually, eventually a situation like this could happen. You know, and so we kind of need some way to remind them, we, yeah, we're still in the county.
Actually, I don't have a whole lot. I do have one item, and it, it falls in line with what you were talking about as far as CSD. This Fourth of July was a, was a great event as far as people going out and having fun, enjoying their families and such. One of the biggest issues from probably the beginning of July till, actually, to this date still, is illegal fireworks. And I don't know what we can do to resolve it as far as the city. I know what we used to do, back when the Galt Fire District and the, and the City of Galt Police Department had their own arson unit. We'd go out there and, and do sweeps, but I don't see that happening anymore. We had...
I'd like to address that.
We had a CSD member and Galt Police Department teamed up for four days, out there handling calls for service and looking for illegal fireworks. We had 54 calls for service on, in one day for the illegal fireworks. Contact was made with some of the residents, and there were no arrests made, and, and but when we got there, there were, there were no illegal fireworks found. Probably they were all set off. So, but we've documented all the folks that were involved. So, so we had a team out there this year.
The evidence.
The only thing I encourage the public is to call, and then when they're done calling, call again, and then call again, because most of what we noticed was all on social media, not actually called in to us. So, and as long as CSD's on board next year, we're going to continue to do the same thing and have the, the teams out there and the task force out there, so.
Thank you.
And one of the things that the county's looking at is increasing the fine, because it's, the fine is fairly low, there's not much, and not much incentive for it not to happen, even if you did find the fireworks, it's, it's a, it's a relatively, I mean, the DA has to agree, and they also, I know the county's talking about, they talked, actually at their meeting today about bringing it back and looking at what they, what they could do to curtail it because of the issue.
To add to your comment, we've had preliminary discussions with the fire chief, and so we have scheduled meetings set up to prepare for next year, specifically to the topic that you're referring to and our enforcement efforts for next year. So it's a big issue in our state, it's a big issue across the United States, illegal fireworks, but in our state, it's, it's, it was pretty bad this year. And so with fire chief, city manager, myself, we're all, we've already got a scheduled meeting to start discussing those things early on to address it, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the mortars are still felonies to possess, correct?
It is. So it's whether they get filed on or not. So we, we can make the arrests, and we can write the reports, but it's whether they get filed on. So there's an avenue for administrative fines that'll hurt folks also, so. But again, our first meeting is scheduled in a couple weeks.
Thanks, chief.
Tom?
No, I think I'm done.
The other item that I'd like to ask council to bring back, to have staff bring back at a future item, I'd like it done as a, well, I'd like to ask us for a presentation regarding, as everyone is aware, the homeless issue is, is a huge issue, and, and we have a, a large homeless camp that's in San Joaquin County outside our, our city jurisdiction. But I'd really, what I'd really like to do is just to have a, a presentation by TJ or, and/or the chief about what we do proactively in our community to deal with the issue, to deal with some of the homeless issue we have in our community, if the council... Chief's giving me that look.
No, it's no problem. I mean, we can, we can do that. We, we, you know, without getting into a presentation now, we, we have a pretty proactive approach to homelessness, but, you know, since we're talking about it, the homeless itself is not illegal. It's not a crime. It's not a crime to be homeless, and, and you're talking about mental, mental illness, and so...
That's illegal camping, I guess that's...
Illegal camping is, 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 is a part of the issue, but also the crimes that are associated with the, with the littering and the, and the, the trash and the, and the stolen property that you find out on different camps and stuff. So we've taken a pretty proactive approach to, to all of that, and there's a process to how we have to go in and book everything that we find, so we have a pretty good process for that. So I'll prepare something and...
For a future item, I'm, I'm not saying next meeting, or, I mean, for the future. I just think that there is some, there is concern in the community about what we do, and I know that the safety committee and different issue, different areas are looking at, the county's looking at it, and I just, I guess my concern is that the community know that we really are being proactive with it and do have some, some things that we're doing to, to try to help, whether it's to help the individuals, but also on working with the issue in our community and what the community can do.
Absolutely, and if that's what council's direction is, we, of course, will bring something back.
I'm just asking for the council's permission to have that as a future presentation.
Sure. No problem here.
Okay, consensus of the council. Okay. Any further comments? Meeting adjourned.